Monday, October the 21st, and I bring the city council meeting to order. We see that everyone is present, and so we're going to move forward in the invocation and get Mr. Brandon to give the invocation. Please rise and bow your heads. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight, we thank you for giving us the opportunity to gather and do the work of the city and citizens, Lord. We just ask that you be with the council as they listen to everything and help guide them as they make the decisions for the city, Lord. We just ask that you bless our employees, everyone that works for the city, Lord, amen.
Lord, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Congress of Texas flag have pledged allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Alrighty, moving into citizen comment period. This is the time that we allow three minutes to speak. During this time, the council is allowed to listen but not allowed to respond. And so, we're going to invite Ms. Quero to come and speak.
Good evening, my name is Marina Magistros, and I am here on behalf of myself, my daughter Madeline, and also the community. What I wanted to bring to light was that here recently, and I believe I was the target, and I can tell you why. There were such in houses affected in my neighborhood, actually on my street and in the surrounding neighborhood. Someone entered a backyard, this is my neighbor's backyard, and disconnected the power. It was an intentional act. I've been speaking with Energy, and they're the ones who informed us that this was an intentional act. The reason I believe that I was the target of that incident is because we had, I say we, my family, have had strangers in our home or in our backyard. Our dog has been poisoned, we've had people banging on our doors and windows, yelling in the street to open up the doors and then leaving. We've had vehicles passing by taking photos of our house. And I believe it's because I've been trying to put justice for my daughter. And I'm here that, you know, that Chief Wood has been an outstanding representation of your city, so I want to commit to all that. I've spoken with Detective Dale, so I did report it, and I informed her of what Energy had informed me that it was an intentional act. And they do know, because another neighbor actually told them as well, that they believe that I was the target for that incident. So I just want to make sure that thirteen houses that were affected, I don't know who they are at this point, other than one or two, or actually three now. But I would, if the word get out, I'd like to encourage some to speak to Detective Dale, the Bay Police Department, so that we can, it's a criminal act, and so that we can get to the bottom of this. So that's what I want to share with you. Also, I did submit some open records, so I'm hoping that I can get some responses on that, and also on the allegiance I have requested. We are looking to, I would place an announcement that we can have better service here, and for all the reasons above. And if there's any more reasons that you need, please feel free to contact me. And that's really, so, any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Quero.
Yes, sir.
Moving into presentations of victim reports, city manager updates.
I'm gonna stand up, I don't want to sit on that microphone. So we have a few quick updates. We have another request to speak.
What's that?
Another request to speak.
Okay, what have you got?
We got a, started the bank shot project, began over in Henderson Day. The Gulf Endland Lift Station project is nearing completion, pretty much just a couple of punch lists, and that'll be done. Sawmill Lift Station, I believe you said it was around ninety percent on the, so we should be getting started with that pretty quick. The Clayton Waterwell project's around sixty percent. The police department had their Police Chief Association inspection this week, it's completed. We should have results back in about thirty weeks on that, look for the pass for that, hands down. We had a couple of little small things in that much. And then, we received the animal shelter, they're on its backs, it's gotta go to T D L R, I found out today, I'm not sure why, but that's what the architect said. So as soon as they get the stamp back on that, he said about a week, we'll be able to go out for R P S.
Where is T D L R?
Texas Department of License and Regulatory Agency, I believe. I'm, I'm, I'm a pure guess, but I'm pretty sure that's where it is. Was it a good guess?
Yes.
Perfect, yes. Other than that, Tammy Green has a presentation for the Scenic City Awards you want to share with you guys.
So, staff went out for, we applied for the Scenic City Award. This is the second time we've applied for the award. You can get between recognized, applied, and then, five years ago, we got recognized, that we got up to bronze. This time, we also got one of those to go and coming into town on the highway. So basically, I just want to let y'all know that we received it again. Basically, what we do is we have to fill an application that has about thirteen different categories, if you have to put what your ordinances are, and that's how we rate it this year. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll circle back and allow Mr. Prager to come and speak for three minutes, and the council is not allowed to respond. Is he in here? Mr. Richard?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My issue is, my road down here, I live on a rural road, six oh six, which is in the city. And it's the only road I think that does have pavement on it. It's, I complained several times, they come down, put a little rock on it, and a couple weeks later, it's full of holes again. I built a house there, I had to go by all the city ordinances, the rules, inspections, and all that, so. There was a water, they came to find it, and they dug the ditch all up, and it was just tore up. And I had two people come out and say, this is bad, we're gonna fix this, but nobody's ever done anything. My main issue is my road, it's, like I said, sixty-sixty-five, it's not perfect, but it's been paved. The road closer to Dayton is paved. Mine is nothing but just rock, and it's just horrible, when you try to get out on nineteen sixty, it's such a difference. It's kind of a safety hazard. And my other question was, I was told that we were gonna get city secretary at some point, is that in the works? Can somebody answer that for me?
What I, what I can tell you is, I'll have our action city manager get with you, and get your contact information, get contact with you tomorrow.
I would really like somebody to call me if they could, I could not speak too much, that's alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, moving into financial reports.
Good evening, mayor and council. This report represents a general overview of our financial operations through September twenty twenty-four, which is the last month of the fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four. The budget is a hundred percent complete for the fiscal year. This financial report contains unaudited numbers for the fiscal year, and emphasizes that these numbers are not final. Despite the conclusion of the fiscal year, our team is still in the process of working closely with auditors to conduct a comprehensive year-end audit. So for the general fund, we have total revenues are at eleven million, five hundred ninety-three thousand, seven ninety-one, or one oh nine percent of budget, which is four point six percent less than last year year-to-date due to the reduced transfer from the water sewer fund and the sell-off surplus. We have total expenditures are at eleven million, three hundred forty-one thousand, three ninety-four, or eighty-nine percent of budget, which is twenty point eight percent more than last year year-to-date. However, expenditures are trending eleven percent lower than budgeted numbers for the fiscal year. Revenues are over expenditures by two hundred fifty-two thousand, three ninety-seven. It's important to note that the city continues to incur expenses, and not all revenue for the previous fiscal year has been collected. This is a normal part of the financial process, and anticipate that these transactions will settle in the coming weeks. Additionally, the financial numbers are not final until the city undergoes a comprehensive review by the auditors, who will assess our books and finalize the numbers. Staff will keep monitoring the revenues and expenditures for the year, the year end of the year fiscal year. For the water sewer fund, we have total revenues are at seven million, six oh five thousand, eight twenty, or one oh seven percent of budget, which is six point six less than last year year-to-date due to billing collections. Total expenses are at six million, eight hundred sixty-five thousand, one ninety, or ninety-nine percent of budget, which is twelve point two percent more than last year year-to-date due to debt payments. Revenues are over expenses by seven hundred forty thousand, six thirty-one, due to revenue collections affecting higher and department expenses lower. However, the city continues to incur expenses for the fiscal year-end. For the solid waste fund, we have total revenues are at eight hundred twenty-three thousand, three forty-six, or one oh one percent of budget, which is trending within budget. Total expenses are at six hundred eighty-two thousand, five seventy-five, or ninety-eight percent of budget, which is trending three point two percent less than year-to-date. Revenues are over expenses by a hundred and forty thousand, seven seventy-one, due to the department savings on contracted services and salaries. For the fiber fund, we have total revenues are at two hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred, which is seventy-seven point one percent more than last year year-to-date. This is due to the increase of interest and several new day night signups. Total expenses are at six hundred and seventy thousand, seven eleven, or forty-seven percent of budget, which is significantly more than last year due to the fiber installations, contracted services, and personal expenses. Revenues are under expenses by four hundred and fifteen thousand, six twelve, due to, once again, the fiber expenses that are occurring to continue to service the city of day services.
Okay. Thank you for that. One, sorry, one, one quick question, when are we gonna start the audit? When do we usually start it?
So, around December, that's when they, they start asking us for like, they'll start asking us to provide them for information, and that's when they look at our books. But usually, we don't finish the audit by, we finish audit by March.
Okay, okay. I didn't, I didn't know when, during the year, I couldn't remember from last year.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you for that. Moving into mayor and, mayor and council comment period.
I have a few things, announcements I'd like to make for the community. The Dayton Police Department, their DEA program for turning in old prescriptions or prescriptions for family members that are deceased, maybe something like that. They have a program, DEA program, that is going to be set up where you can drop those off at the Dayton Police Department on October twenty-sixth, from ten a.m. to two p.m. Also, let everybody know that this Friday is the homecoming game for the Dayton Broncos, and we'd like to see everybody go show their support. And on Monday, October twenty-eighth, the Dayton Historical Society is having their monthly meeting at six p.m. And their guest speaker is our superintendent for Dayton ISD, Dr. Jessica Johnson. And she's gonna be providing an update with important things that are happening in the local district, if anyone's interested in attending that. Thursday, October fourteenth, I'm sorry, November fourteenth, the Chamber of Commerce is having their monthly luncheon. And the guest speaker is gonna be Liberty County Judge J. Nine, delivering the state of the county address. And it will be held at the community center at eleven a.m. on Thursday, November fourteenth. And to remind everybody that early voting has begun, and for all registered voters, I encourage you to get out there and vote. That's all I have.
Anybody else have anything?
I got a couple of things. While you're voting, we do have a book sale going on in the library, it's the Friends of the Library doing the book sale. And all the proceeds from those books go to help do programs for the community. So sometimes it's art programs, sometimes it's stuff for the kids, sometimes it's summer reading. So if you're looking for something to read, we have tons of wonderful books. And also, congratulations to Brandon Davis and his daughter. She had a really good showing for some artwork at T D D, and I know he's real proud, and we should all be proud. Congratulations, thank you.
I have something I would like to just piggyback on from Tammy Green. We recently attended T M L, and not really understanding until we were there and understanding the process that it takes to get the Scenic City Award. I didn't realize how detailed and what kind of paperwork and what your department had to go through in order to just get the recognition on the award. So it was, it was a beautiful occasion that we had a handful of people. I would have liked to see more people who attended the T M L conference present at the award, because there were so many other cities. They were so excited cheering on their cities, and to see the mayors and all their council and their boards represented. It was like a fun, fun, exciting award ceremony that I wish that we would have all participated in. So for Tammy and your department, I want to say, great job, you did amazing. I just didn't, I don't know if you guys realize the time and effort, but apparently, it's a, it's a lengthy process, and it's not easy. You have to do a lot of making sure that you're meeting the codes, the regulations, the laws, it's a very lengthy process, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Also, I would have liked to heard from everyone on council who did attend the council, the conference. I thought it was some very interesting forums that we got to participate in, about how we can improve our city, preparing for emergencies, some of the grants and services that are available for cities such as Dayton. This year's conference, I, I gained more personally, I can speak for myself, from that. So I want to say thank you to the city secretary for, you know, going above and beyond and making sure we were all kept in the loop throughout that, the few days that we were there. I promise you, three days, I felt it for like the next five days, because of the walking. But again, the city of Dayton was recognized, and it makes me feel good as a city council to be recognized among so many other cities that's within the T M L. So you guys did a good job. The city workers, staff, and council, mayor.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, moving into, into consent agenda. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda for the approval of financial reports for September twenty twenty-four?
Well, she's approved the consent agenda as a second.
You have a motion to approve of the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda passes. Okay, moving into action items, eight eight, considered with possible action on ordinance number zero, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, approval of zoning and app amendment request for property located at forty-five forty-five F M nineteen sixty, Dayton, Texas, seven seven five thirty-five, legally described as Mayfield Block eleven, Lot P P, Track three, to make the zone change from rural agricultural to industrial.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is a zone change amendment that has been presented to you guys. This is for property located at forty-five forty-five F M nineteen sixty. You can see on the map over here, the, it is the highlighted encircled piece of the picture. It is, prior use to this was as a dog kennel, I believe, dog storage place, just if you're wondering where it is on nineteen sixty. It's five point oh nine acres. The request was to change it from rural ag to industrial. And this, the applicant is First Liberty Bank, who is the current owner of the property. And they are looking to sell it to a company that is Green Shield Products, who is the one that is wanting to do the, the use change. And I'll let someone from the bank or the company, whoever's here, come up and present. But it's our understanding that this is a big building, a big enclosed building, like forty thousand square foot type building, that all the manufacturing, they manufacture roofing materials, like a insulated foam type roofing material, that they do all of that indoors, inside the warehouse, inside the building. And it went to planning and zoning staffs, the building, the planning department's recommendation was a denial of the zone change. But it went to planning and zoning, and P and Z voted to approve it, to approve the change. And the reasons given for staff or from the planning department to deny it were a couple of things. One is it would be the only industrial along nineteen sixty there, in that area, one thing, zoned industrial. The other thing is there are residential, you know, a couple of residential neighborhoods that are going in, and they're kind of close vicinity to this, along nineteen sixty. And so there was some concern about how those would play together. It's my understanding that at P and Z, none of the neighbors, nobody came, am I right there? No, nobody, none of the surrounding neighbors ever seen, noticed, came to the meeting, to the hearing, to argue for or against it. So if y'all would like, I think you could have somebody from the bank, or Realtor, or whoever with the company come up and present to you guys.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. We are here to discuss the rezoning request for forty-five forty-five F M nineteen sixty, which is currently zoned as rural agricultural. We are proposing to rezon this property to industrial, we are proposing to rezon the property to industrial at destination that aligns with the surrounding area's development and future potential. As you know, F M nineteen sixty, along with Highway ninety, one forty-six, and three twenty-one, represents a unique blend of industrial properties, general commercial businesses, agricultural land, and semi-urban residential developments in various residential zones. This diversity is part of what makes Dayton adaptable and vibrant. Resoning forty-five forty-five F M nineteen sixty to industrial is not only reasonable, but essential for the area's continued growth. We already have examples of mixed-use zoning throughout the city, such as the industrial property across from the community center on Rukowski. Even the community, community center itself is zoned rural agricultural. Dayton zoning is already highly mixed, showing that a thoughtful combination of uses is not only possible, but successful. We recognize that the zoning needs, needs a strategic approach for the city's growth, but given the mixed-use nature of nearly every major roadway in the city, the recommendation against rezoning this property doesn't seem consistent with the current zoning map. For instance, the River Ranch Project, the largest development in South Liberty County, at seven thousand acres, is projected to bring fourteen thousand to twenty thousand new residents. The Sterling Traditions Development, just one mile north of River Ranch, is bringing in additional six hundred acres with sixteen hundred single-family homes. It would seem contradictory for Highway one forty-six to be the industrial corridor. Yet, for F M nineteen sixty, not to support also this type of development. Resoning forty-five forty-five F M nineteen sixty to industrial will not disturb the fabric of the community. In fact, it will support its natural evolution. Industrial zoning in this area is a logical extension of the existing mixed uses, and it will contribute significantly to Dayton's long-term economic health. This business, Green Shield Products, formed in two thousand and eight, blends and distributes polyurethane and silicone products. They plan to employ twenty-five to thirty full-time staff with anticipated revenue growth from ten million to fifty million by twenty twenty-eight. Many of their employees are inspected to reside in the surrounding subdivisions directly supporting the local economy. That gives Dayton a taxable value of about twelve million, twelve to fourteen million without infrastructure build-out and no garden to the city. This rezoning would also bring invaluable benefits to Dayton, including increased tax revenue, job creation, further investment into the community. These benefits will bolster the local economy, create opportunities for local contractors and support surrounding businesses. Additionally, the increased tax revenue generated from both the property value increase and the business personal property will provide vital resources that the city can access to the infrastructure improvements, the community programs, and other essential services. Furthermore, the rezoning aligns with Dayton's strategic vision of fostering economic development. Transitioning the property from agricultural to industrial will diversify the city's economic base. There also are examples on F M nineteen sixty, just one tenth of a mile and three tenths of a mile, that are industrial businesses to this property. They are zoned rural agricultural because they were grandfathered in when the zoning map was changed. However, this business, their chemicals will stay all indoors, and their building will be a much nicer facade. So it will be a great improvement to the area. Thank you for your time this evening, and we greatly appreciate your consideration in the rezoning of this property.
Do we have anyone that, do we have anyone that has any questions about council?
I have a question.
Go ahead. One more person was going.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought he was coming up to answer questions.
I can answer questions.
And I'm, thank you, Ms. Heather, she spoke very well about the whole project, and I'd just like to reiterate on a few things too. First off, thank y'all for having us, mayor, council members, and the city staff, first off, so. And we are rezoning, before we took ownership of the property, it was Rose's boarding animal plant, or animal facility, and also turned into Dayton's Dog Town afterwards. Whenever the bank took ownership, we had to sort of clean it up on the property, and those facilities were very much dilapidated or eyesore, and so we, we took it down, cleaned up the property, and transferred to rural agricultural. And so, with this change, if approved, there'd be a bunch of benefits, you know, there's twenty to thirty new jobs, full-time people, good-paying jobs. There's, it's gonna be either, you know, existing locals or people coming in, people coming to want to live, shop, and spend their time, and raise families here. It's gonna be very appealing to the, the structure in itself, it's forty thousand square foot building, nineteen sixty coming in off of ninety-nine. It's gonna be a very, it's a state-of-the-art facility, you know, everything's gonna be enclosed, there's not gonna be a eyesore, pipes, you know, burn off, things like that. So I think y'all will be very pleased with that as well. It's not gonna be noise pollution, you'll be operating with the most of the days, you know, just eight to five, and then maybe a Saturday, but never any Sundays. No smells or toxic, you know, anything, it's all enclosed, so, and traffic too. There won't be, you know, eighteen wheelers coming in and out of this property all day either. But, and the tax base, you know, right now, it's zoned as rural agricultural, and there's not much tax for the government. Once the building gets there, it's gonna be quite the incentive for the city and county as well. But in, in general, we'd just like a mutually beneficial relationship for the city and Green Shield coming in, a great company from everything that we understand. And one thing that we would like to say is that on the previous, one of the big issues with the industrial zoning for the area was the, the future aspect, if Green Shield leaves in ten years, what comes in next when that zone is there? What the bank would like to offer on that? And uh what the bank would like to offer on that is uh some deed restrictions as well that would cover that and keep, you know, kind of a no uh exterior, external, exterior manufacturing or storage uh outside the building, you know, just to keep it clean-cut and prevent that, mitigate that risk for y'all in the future as well. So, um, with that said, that's all. Everybody more than happy to answer questions. We also have our gentleman from Green Shield here today. Got questions about the product or the facility itself?
So, Mayor, uh, Council, I realize I have a picture of it that I forgot, neglected to send in to get put in the package. So I'll just, it's okay with y'all, I'll walk up here and you can look at it on my phone at least. I apologize for not, they sent it to me and then I didn't.
It helps to have some pretty out.
I didn't get it put in the package. Oh, perfect, even better, even better. Here. That's way better, thank you.
Can I go ahead and ask questions?
Yeah.
Are we looking at a facility that's gonna be just manufacturing, distribution, or are we looking at sales? So would there be sales tax revenue from this operation?
So there would probably be sales tax revenue. We do a large uh portion of our current business in taxes, um specifically, uh, I believe in Harris County. So it would be some.
Can I have you, I can barely hear you at all.
Comes a microphone.
Okay, Brian, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, there would be sales tax revenue as well. Um, just off the top of my head, believe that we're probably doing somewhere between five and seven million in taxes at this point.
What is your point of sale, though? What is your point of sale for those subtaxes? It's in Houston, the city of Dayton gains.
It wouldn't be, it would not be in Houston. Uh, the offices in the facility that we have in Houston right now would be decommissioned, shut down. We vacate that. It would all be out of Dayton.
So the the sales tax will come to the city of Dayton?
As far as I know, I'm, I'm, I'm from Nevada. I come out here for two weeks at a time, I go home for a week. Um, actually grew up in Montgomery County until I was about ten or eleven years old. So I do have some roots here. Um, but as a chemist.
You don't know me as.
No, ma'am.
To that question.
And I'm not gonna shout you on, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Why this property? Why, I mean, you're saying you want to align with our our zoning plans and stuff, but this doesn't. We we, in our zoning plans, we we want industrial in a specific area. And you're asking us to change that for this property, for this use. My question is why this property? Why wouldn't we go into more industrial corridors?
As the chemist, I'm not sure. Do you guys have any? Is it a billion?
When you look at the zoning map, um, I understand that the city has projected one forty-six, and Highway ninety is their industrial pathway. But the two largest neighborhoods in South Liberty County are on one forty-six, and they are not in the city limits.
Right.
The the neighborhoods are not in the city limits, but the two neighborhoods?
River Ranch is not in the city limits, no.
Okay.
You're just telling me traditions.
So those are neither one in the city limits, correct? However, so this this property and their business would only be zoned industrial. The only reason the difference between industrial and general commercial, as Brooks Brothers and Thrifties are both general commercial zone, is because they don't have the citizens that go into their property, and they ship their products out on a truck. The only diff- that's the only thing that makes down industrial over general commercial.
I understand that, but we've got houses next door.
They're not next door, they're almost a mile away.
This is the old Rose's burning?
Yes.
It's still a residential area?
Uh, there's, everything around that is just land. And right across the street and right next door is another industrial property that manufactures oil and gas industry.
Right, but isn't there a home that's uh been remodeled on the nineteen six on the frontish part of where Rose's or the the dog place used to be?
No.
Does a house, if you go west of that property, there is a home that's just been re- remodeled there.
That's closer to town, that's not part of this property.
It's literally like a, like a little driveway that separates the properties, if I'm not mistaken. If we're talking about Rose's, uh, the former Rose's dog grooming place?
Yes.
I think, I thought there was a home on that property in the front.
There was, but those.
There's no over there?
They're torn down.
Oh, okay.
Those were on the property, and they were in terrible shape, and we actually demolished them.
Oh, okay, I recently demolished those.
Earlier this year.
Even in the city limits, exactly? We gotta now put a note, rest of it even in the city limits, all of it?
Yes.
Um. I mean, I understand what you're saying about um other ones in the area that are grandfathered, which we can't do anything about, but that was, like I'm saying, the purpose of us creating the zoning map is to guide the growth in the areas that we want to see it go. And so that's my concern is you're, you know, if if we say yes to this one, and then another one comes along and another one, and before you know it, we're doing exactly it what we're, what the zoning map is, it, we're going against what our plan is and what we want the future of our city to look like. We don't want to be a channel view with industrial right next to a residential area, which nineteen sixty's gonna be full of, as we have two large developments going in right there.
I understand your point, that this building is gonna be a state-of-the-art building. And even though according to the zoning, there's no white industrial zoning code in the zoning plan when it was made, and the only difference is that their trucks come in, maybe one or two a day, they said most at five a week, just like Brooks Brothers or Thrifties, and this is a state-of-the-art building. And it's not going to be like your typical.
I can see the building.
Yes.
It's not gonna. Something I would want to see in a residential area.
So I would, um, if y'all mind, Councilwoman, uh, Smichael, I would, I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. Green, I'm sorry, you got, you're right in the middle of a recie. Um.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, based on the information that they're providing to us from a planning perspective, um, and I agree with Councilwoman Smichael, we do not want to see um industrial businesses going up where um there are homes or close to uh rural areas. What is your take on on this situation? I would like to hear from a planning perspective.
Um, what was brought in from the the Planning and Zoning Commission? Uh, in Chris's notes, it was they had put for it to be denied because it doesn't need, what, the zoning district doesn't have it as, and that there is residences in in that area. So the planning staff was to deny the zoning amendment.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was um looking for.
So I, I guess my question is, I understand the reasoning for Chris's denial. What what's with, what's with the split? Why, why are they going, why is the planning and zoning committee going against? What was their reasoning?
Um, so they asked the um them several questions about, you know, if what was gonna be admitted into the air, um, if they thought it was going to be um cause a lot of traffic, and they answered all the questions. Like they said, no, it wasn't gonna admit a lot of stuff in the air. Um, and so they um, they decided to go with the developer after asking them, you know, just questions about what they were gonna, if it was gonna be admitted into the air and if there was gonna be a lot of traffic, and so. And we did not, so out of our seven members, one abstained, one denied, and five approved. So it was one of our councilmen, I mean, one of our members is, works for the um real estate company, so he's abstained.
And that's just based on the the questions, the the generic uh questions that they have to ask, that we would while we were, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so uh based on the generic questions, they met the criteria to say that it's, they could make that decision based on that, but from the city planning perspective, they would deny.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, can I just add a little bit of color to this? Uh, the property was originally zoned agricultural use. I attended many of the meetings that y'all had had for zoning because it affects the bank. And we, we're the largest individual financier property in in Liberty County. And this was one of the concerns that when we came up with the zoning that was being implemented, how it would impact future values or get embarrasses from, for the property. The property is currently located, uh, you can throw a rock from that property to the manufacturing facility uh on the same side of the road. I guess that would be the south side of the road, right across the church parking lot, and hit a manufacturing plant. Directly across from that facility is a polymer uh facility that uses plastics every day. This is a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar contribution to your bottom line for property taxes. No infrastructure provided, and a clean business that will promote uh revi- uh salaries from fifty thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year. There's not many two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year jobs in Dayton, Texas. I'm not saying there aren't gonna be two-hundred-and-fifty, just saying. And yes, we are concerned as well about uh the impact of this because there are other businesses that are currently financed rural agricultural, and if they cannot change their zoning, when it gets, comes time to sell it, they're handicapped.
Can I answer something on that? So somebody, so somebody has a business on a property that's zoned rural agriculture, if it stays commercial, because it's already been commercial, if that building is grandfathered in? But if they were to like demolish it, then they would have to, that they use the same building, and they want to be commercial again, they still can?
Our property was a crack house. It was being used for dope. So we were doing the right thing from a public standpoint of condemning the property and solving some of the problems that were being faced by the local police. So we appreciate your consideration, have a good decision, thank you very much.
Um, you said it would bring jobs, I heard two things, two parts. Um, that some of the jobs, you don't, you guys at this moment do not know how many, it's about thirty, thirty-five jobs, right? Um, but how many of those jobs was, would actually apply to local content versus um job, people that are coming in that would come with this company if this was to be approved?
That's an excellent question, ma'am. I'm just, uh, I'm uh working first for Liberty Bank, and I will have to let this gentleman here speak to that. But thank you very much.
So I would say uh the figure of dirty jobs would probably be as the uh project reaches maturity. So I would expect to see something like that in three to five years. Um, initially, probably looking at fifteen to twenty. And most of that um would be of a nature where we can pull from a local labor pool, um, where we can work with people who live here locally. We can educate them on how to do the job, teach them a new trade, um, and and uh develop them in that regard. So I don't foresee having to pull labor or talent from outside of Dayton.
Okay, so basically what I heard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. So if this was to happen, then the, it sounds like that the local content would get the lower dollar nomination of those positions, and of course, your management that would come in from elsewhere um would probably benefit for the higher range in the salaries, correct? Because you are coming in and training the locals on how to do whatever it is that you guys want to do. And you really don't know how many of those jobs will really be here because it's on a three- to five-year uh plane, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we, do we have anybody from uh EDC here?
Okay. Brandon, if we was to table this, have a discussion under economic development of some sort later, could we do that?
You could, if you, you one hundred percent can table it, um, and bring it back there. I don't know what that does for, you know, for their timeline, but but you as a council could vote to table it. Um, now, if we were gonna talk about economic development negotiations, that's something that we could talk about uh in the future, but realistically, we aren't talking, we aren't negotiating any sort of benefits or anything.
Okay. Next one.
Um, if there's no more questions, um, can I get a motion? Whether to uh approve, deny, or table?
Our motion definitely table it and have further discussion.
Second.
Have a motion to table with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Do you have a time limit? Motion is tabled.
I don't personally. Um, I can come up with one. Sorry.
Can we get some solid numbers for the next time that we see you guys, like on the um revenue, like how much sales tax, and then making sure that the point of sale is going to be here in Dayton?
If, I I can definitely make sure that the point of sale is here in Dayton. I can definitely do that. If I had the ability to see that far into the future, I probably wouldn't be a chemist. Um, but I can, I can, um, maybe I can find some case studies. This isn't the first one of these that I've been a part of. Um, and, you know, we can probably develop some ranges.
Thank you.
True.
Okay.
And just uh on another note, speaking of chemists, and these uh product is what they're using like on the roofing at the, at Liberty ISD right now, so it's a benefit the county in other ways too, just right now, just for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay. Uh, moving into um item B, considered with possible action on resolution number R twenty-two-four dash eighty-three, a resolution authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Community Development Fund.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, this is a uh seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar, up to a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant uh that has to be used in a LMI area. Uh, it is a matching ten percent, so we would be required to come up with ten percent if we got the full grant, so roughly seventy-five thousand if we got that. And use that in uh LMI designated areas for road um water and sewer projects, so um.
In street. I said road. Yeah.
Do we have a particular one you are looking at for that money?
So, yes, ma'am, if they, they have to do their survey to verify of a specific area, but uh hopefully the Houston Street and Young Street area over there, it would be a recommendation.
So the LMI is the low-to-middle-income areas, right? And I think we only have two of those designated areas in the city of Dayton, right? That's the old locals in Prince Selwyn area. And you guys already identified that you would um utilize those funds on Young and Houston Street?
If if that, if that, they have to do their own survey for this grant to to designate that as an LMI area.
Okay.
And if they do come back as an LMI area for that, that that would be my recommendation, we'll be using for that area.
Okay, so um, they would determine which is, which areas that LMI are, being that we know that Dayton have two of those areas. Um, how is, how they determine where they, we, uh, the area? Is that what I'm understanding? Or is it that the city's saying, hey, these are two areas, or these are three or whatever areas we feel that, you know, this grant would benefit for the work that is being done? I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, so we, my understanding is we already have one area over there that that's on the one point four. You're, you're, you're correct. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Who's correct, me or you?
You are. So there's, there's two areas, and if if Young and Houston come back not, that we can't use them, they won't be using them up at Honeycutt and Austin in that area.
And the Prince Selwyn, I might call it Prince Selwyn, but okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I.
No, no, I just want.
I was trying to lead into, we had the other one point four over in that other area, and if we couldn't use it over here, we would use it over there.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
So basically, we're saying.
I understand, thank you.
Ten percent of whatever.
Whatever.
Funds we have remaining, whatever to pay for this up there. I would like to. I would like to make a motion. We approve resolution R 2024-83, authorizing submission of the Texas Community Development Block Grant application as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 8B passes. 8C, considered with possible action on resolution number R 2024-84, approving contracting with Carter Construction for the Waco Street Extension Project.
Mayor and Council, we finally got some numbers. Y'all, y'all got it in your package? It was cheaper, believe this or not, it's cheaper to do concrete than it is pavement right now. The prices of asphalt just went through the roof, so. I have a letter from our engineers, Lee, and we went through all the bids. Y'all have seen all the bids, we've done some studies on the contractors. We've worked with Carter's Construction for Rocky Road and Stilson Road. They've done a wonderful job for the city of Dayton. So they are the second lowest bid, and that's what staff is going to recommend who would go with. The lowest bid, they've only been in business for one year, one month. And I couldn't find any recommendations on them, so.
I think we would pass on that one, thank you.
It would, Carter's did come over budget a couple hundred dollars, so I do need to point that out. Well, council gave us 619,200, and Carter's come in at 619,358, so that's more than 100. That's more than 100.
All right, anybody have any questions? If not, can we get a motion?
I move that we approve resolution number R 2024-84, approving contracting with Carter Construction for the Waco Street Extension Project.
I have a motion to approve with a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed?
Hey, America, I think, well, probably go with the department, we stay on top of it and make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Yes, sir, we, we have a civilian inspector and he will be on their side every day.
Thank you, sir. All right, item 8D, considered with possible action on resolution number R 2024-89, regarding the closure of Church Street on October the 26th, 2024, for the annual trucker tree.
Mayor and Council, this is closing the street over there from around 5:30 to around 8 o'clock for the trucker tree festival. It comes every year, I'm, I'm okay with it if y'all.
I don't know, I don't, I know it just kind of goes by common practice, but I don't think it's set stone of why we have to keep asking, but, you know. They just need to do it whatever it takes.
Can we, can we get a motion then?
Can I do both? 8D and 8E together in the same motion?
Sure.
Okay, so I move that we approve resolution number R 2024-89 and R 2024-88 regarding the closure of Church Street on October 26th and 27th to the annual trucker tree.
I have a motion to approve with a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? 8D, 8E passes. 8F, considered with possible action on resolution number R 2024-77, approving the use of peg funds to purchase live cams.
I'm just bringing this back to y'all, we tabled it, that way I could see about getting all of it together. So currently we already have God Delivery, our website, and our agenda software that goes through Granicus. So I was able to get pricing that would include getting the live cast and also three years of the annual service fee for all of those products, which totals the, I think it's 54,000. And we can use that out of peg funds and then we wouldn't have to worry about budgeting for any of those for the next three years until, then it would be time to renew. And then at that time, it would have to come out of our, our regular budget.
What kind of savings did they give us for doing the three-year contract? Nothing, that's worth a shot.
Yeah.
I move that, I'm sorry.
I have a question, I'm sorry. How, so I looked on YouTube just to see how many views we were looking at. In the past year, we're looking at total viewers of like 742. If you take out the three lowest meetings and the three highest meetings, the average is about 35. So what's the plan to capture more viewers? What platforms, if I'm reading it correctly, it'll stream to multiple platforms. Are we looking at Facebook, YouTube, other platforms?
I, I haven't thought that far ahead. This, this puts it on our website, we can still put it on YouTube. I'm sure we can put it other places, but this makes it easier and it'll link it to our agenda. You can go and click on item 8F and it'll take you to that part, I mean.
It's pretty sweet, I mean, the technology is amazing, but for, for the low number of views that we have?
It's a lot of money.
It is, it is a lot of money, and then year four, are we looking at $24,000 that we're going to have to budget out of the general fund?
She's including all the other stuff that we already have.
Right, so this, this is only going to be about, for an extra $4,000 a year. So we pay for all that anyway?
Yes, sir, we just pay for it, we pay for it.
Okay, so $4,000 extra gets us the bells and whistles.
Yes, yeah.
And would we be able to live stream it to, in addition to YouTube, put it on Facebook as well?
I'm sure.
It has the capability.
Right, I read about it, which was kind of interesting.
It'll hit all your major social media platforms as well as our website.
Okay, because that could pull more viewers. It would, people, people tune in when there's something to watch, I suppose. But I would, I would like to see more viewers, so, so this is really only about 4,000 more?
A year, yeah, than what we're already paying in. We, the reason why it's so much right now, it's, it's adding the, a one-time fee of $7,658 to get it going. And then by using the peg funds and doing this, now we're able to pay for all of it out of these peg funds. And this will be the only time we can, we can use the peg funds for this.
Right, and there's enough to cover that entire?
Oh yeah, I think there's like 160. Because there's not a whole lot we can use it for.
Sure, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I move that we approve resolution number R 2024-77, approving the use of the peg funds to purchase live casts.
I have a motion to approve with a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Item 8F passes. Just a quick question on 8F. This is just a live cast, right? This is not purchasing the, those additional cameras?
No, no, this is not with the cameras. And I can use the, this to also purchase the cameras, but they're not going to be anywhere near the amount that I would have to bring up to council. So as soon as I, I get those cameras, I can just get those ordered.
All right, item, item 8G, considered with possible action on resolution number R 2024-90, regarding the designation of representative and alternate for HGAC 2025 General Assembly. I would like to say something on this. Due to my job situation right now, I am not going to be able to serve as the HGAC primary this year. And so I want to pull myself out of that and would respectfully ask that Ms. Tanya take my spot since she's the pro temp. And then whoever else that you guys would like to, would like to see on the.
And that's, and that's one of those two?
Yeah, that's one, that would be one of them.
I did have Valerie Redout to me requesting to continue serving on that.
Yes, and I've been actively involved with HDAC as an alternate. And I would like this year to not be an alternate because I feel like I serve my time as an alternate and be more involved directly, and I appreciate the mayor, you know, understanding his work schedule and not being able to be in most of those meetings because they, they, they're monthly. And they have quite, they have a lot of other meetings that I'm engaged in on a regular basis. And I, we share, I share all of the information with Jennifer and city manager from those meetings on a monthly basis or sometimes bi-weekly basis. So I would like to move up as a director and that would be an alternate issue as best possible.
So we have to have a motion for whoever we want on board? Do we want, I mean, do we want the city manager to at least be an alternate this year or?
It's not like the official.
And I have served in the capacity also as the alternate in the past. And actually I've been involved in a couple of the smaller committees with HDAC as well. And familiar with the practices and can commit to attending meetings.
Can I get a motion for Valerie and Tanya?
I make a motion that we adopt resolution R 2024-90, designating Mayor Pro Tem Tanya Smichael as the representative with Councilman Valerie Barton as the alternate for the HDAC 2025 General Assembly.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Item 8G passes with Councilman Smichael and Barton. 8H, considered with possible action on resolution number R 2024-87, declaring equipment as surplus property and approving an agreement with Renee Bates Auctioneers, Inc. for the sale of said surplus equipment, I'd like to see this.
It's, it's all junk. So I'm just, I'm asking council to, it's, it's police cars, it's old dump trucks, it's, it's all trash.
Where'd the fishing stuff come from?
The fishing stuff, that was a, out of the property that we purchased, the storage buildings. It had stuff still in one of the buildings, so we had to put it in auction. So we couldn't just throw it away, so if you want it, you can bid on it.
I was looking at the Humvees.
There's a lot more than that in there, there's a whole lot of kickboxing stuff and all kinds of stuff in there. I, I do have some, I've heard some concern about the dump truck that y'all had bought me and then I'm selling one, but I, I do have pictures and I do want to show you that the truck that we're getting rid of is, it's done.
It's not the one you bought?
No, no, I hadn't purchased it yet, we ordered it. Did they have silver that you can't use? The shoring? Yeah, yes. My machines won't pick up the shoring that we have, that's what, the new stuff.
Didn't we get, yeah, we got some, and they know they got to remove the stickers off those cars.
Yeah, oh yes. So the truck that we're getting rid of was the water departments, it's rusted out, the bed is gone, it's, the motor's gone, the transmission's gone, the hydraulics are gone. I have ballpark prices if we want to part it back together without any labor, it's about $31,000. To put in this truck to try to get it back on the road.
And what was the cost for them?
So what we budgeted was 170s, but it come under budgeted because we took the 2024 model, so it come under budget 20. We have to back that up because I want that 20 grand for another truck, so. So with that said, the, the, the truck that you did purchase for me come under budget 20 grand. But there's another truck just like this that I have that needs a motor. And it's going to run about 30 grand, so I'm asking you to let me still hold on to that 20 grand, put a motor in that one, that would give me three dump trucks, so.
I have to know.
Do we still have the truck with the gravel on it?
Oh yes, sir, we can't get rid of that truck.
All right, go ahead.
I have a commotion if we approve resolution R 2024-87, declaring equipment as surplus property as listed.
Second.
I have a motion with a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Item 8H passes. It is now 7:05 PM and I hereby pause this session and convene an executive session. All right. It is now 8:38 PM and I hereby recess this executive session and call back into normal city council. Action item 10A, considered with possible action on resolution number R 2024-85, a resolution of the city council of Dayton, Texas, approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement relating to Dayton Public Improvement District Number Six and resolving other matters hereunto.
All right, Mayor and Council, this is the development agreement with Four Star USA Real Estate Group for the approximately 464 lots along 1960. As we've discussed, this would be agreeing to create a Pid with a 50% TERS and 50% based on the original value of each home. So it would go down if the house increased in value. And so this, if y'all vote to approve this one, it would be approving the development. We'll come back later with the Pid and TERS.
If we don't have any questions, any further questions, can I get a motion on item 10A?
I motion we approve resolution number R 2024-85, a resolution of the city council of the city of Dayton, approving and authorizing the execution of this development agreement relating to Dayton Public Improvement District Number Six and resolving other matters related thereunto.
All right, I have a motion to approve with a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I have to abstain.
Yes, you do.
So it'd be 401, right? So it's 302, so passes.
All right, item 10A passes. Item 10B, considered with possible action on resolution number R 2024-86, a resolution of the city council of the city of Dayton, Texas, approving and authorizing the execution of a professional service agreement between the city and developer of Dayton Public Improvement District Number Six, resolving other matters incident and related thereunto.
All right, Mayor and Council, this is the agreement whereby the developer would agree to put a deposit of $40,000 with the city that would then be billed against for any expenses that the city has related to this project. And again, if it gets low, then they would put more into it. I recommend approval of this one.
Okay, if we don't have any further questions, can I get a motion on item 10B?
I move that we approve resolution number 2024-86 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to approve with a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed?
Valerie, what was your vote? You abstained, okay. So 302 passes.
What was it?
3012. Thank you.
10B passes, okay. Item 10C, considered with possible action on authorizing city manager to negotiate an approved lease agreement. Want to table it? Want to table it? I just see a motion. To approve or deny? Or table?
I make a motion if we deny city manager negotiating approved lease agreement.
Second. Aye.
Okay. I have a motion with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed.
Item ten C is denied. It is now eight forty-two P M. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn with a second. You're adjourned.
Congratulations, your daughter. Represented a, you know, yeah. That was rodeo, too? Yeah.